Work we did this year because of federal and state grants.
Okay, when we look at the financial statements of the village, there's actually eight.
Thank you.
At the fund level, you can see here that we're auditing. And so there's actually eight opinions included in the financial statement audit. This is, this is consistent with the prior year, the general funds, sewer, capital projects, electric being your major funds. And then some, some other aggregated activities here. We also issue report on internal controls and compliance. That's a gas report under government auditing standards. You guys were lucky this year. You spent about $761,000 in federal funds. So that triggered the need for a federal single audit. And you also spent over, I think it was closer to $800,000 in state DOT grant funds. And so while we were doing the financial statement audit, we did a couple of mini audits here as well. And we'll, we'll talk a little bit about what those entailed later on in the, in the presentation. So a little extra work this year, in addition to the financial statement audit, we have to do some compliance control work over these, these grants that we determined to be major, and we'll talk about those results. So for each of those eight opinions, we have an unmodified opinion. An unmodified opinion is also known as a clean opinion. It means that we did not identify any material discrepancies. Everything was presented as proper. It's the opinion you would want if you could, if you could ask for one, but it's the opinion you earned for each of those opinion units. No financial reporting deficiencies. So if we were to identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, we would of course, report those to you. From a federal grant perspective, I mentioned that audit, that extra audit we had to do. There was only one major program, and that was your highway planning and construction. And, and we'll talk a little bit later about what, what went into that audit. But we did not identify any material non-compliance or internal control matters. So with a financial statement audit, we're trying to validate the financial information you presented to us with a grant audit. We're trying to verify that you complied in all material respects with the rules and regulations of those grant awards. Similarly, we have the same results for the state DOT program. The program that was determined to be major is your, your CHIPS program, the consolidated local street and highway. We, we went through all the compliance matters that you would in an audit such as that and did not identify anything that would be reported as a finding. So clean opinions across the board. From a financial statement audit, this, this should look fairly, fairly similar to past periods. We do, you know, I'd have to look up exactly what we did. We do introduce elements of unpredictability every year so that we're not doing exactly the same thing. We, we obviously go through a significant number of cash disbursements and receipts to make sure things were, your, your Ts were crossed and your Is were dotted, payroll. We consider new accounting standards, although there were none. And then obviously these significant estimates, two of which are actuarial in, in nature are, are considered. And then a few other estimates that we have listed here below. Very similar, again, all the results speak for themselves. We were provided ample audit evidence and documentation. We considered management bias when evaluating estimates. And nothing came to our attention that, that required any corrections or, or any issues that we would report here to you today.
Brendan, can you hear me?
The, if you were to flip through the financial, the financials are quite a long document. And if, just to understand what's in the financial statements, really the only thing that BST produces are those pages on one through three, that's the auditor's report. And if you were to flip to those pages, you don't have to right now, but if you were, you would see that we express an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion on those, on the financial statements, the entire 66-page document. The next section is your, your MDNA. I, you've heard me joke, I call it the Cliff Notes. So if you couldn't read the whole financial statements and you wanted to read pages four through 12, I don't even know if Cliff Notes still exist anymore, but I sure had them back in 1997. But the MDNA would be your, your Cliff Notes. It's a summarized financial data. It, it gives you a good overview of what transpired during the year. And then what you see behind that are really the guts of the financial statement. It's, it's the detail. It's all the different income statements and balance sheets. And then behind that is the notes that, that back up all of those transactions. So the financial statements are largely organized in the same manner. So you have a good degree of comparability if you, if you wanted to compare reports and, and trend financial data, so.
Brendan, this is Julie. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Um, are we supposed to be seeing slides? Cause we see your title slide and then we don't see anything else.
Oh boy. Yeah. Yeah, it's up on my, it's up on my computer. I'm sorry. You're just seeing the, the first.
We just see the title slide and then we can see the thumbnails along the left-hand side there.
All right, let me try something here.
I'll ask. And Brendan, if you have any way to increase the volume at your end on your computer, that will help us here as well.
All right, let's see what I can do.
I see you're on a page that starts with organizational, organization of the financial statements.
All right, we'll just go from here. So here was the scope of services, just to recap. Sorry about that.
That's okay. And can you try and increase the volume on your computer?
Uh, I don't know how to do that, but well, how about I try and talk louder?
Okay, that works too.
Okay. All right. So sorry about that. Technical difficulties. Just reconfirming the slides. What's that?
We have you louder now.
Okay, perfect. So we're, we're talking about the financials. This is where I was. A few financial statement observations, and I'll send these slides over to Megan so that you guys can all have a copy. Just, just a few quick financial statement observations, and then we'll talk about the single audits and get you guys back on your, your program. Full financial wide, one of the things I like to look at when I'm analyzing governments is, is this section right here. You guys invested about $3.6 million into your infrastructure, into your equipment, into your long-term assets. And that's offset by about $1.7 million. I've always thought that the Village of Fairport does a really nice job with budgeting for these projects. Having the financing lined up, having the grants lined up. And it really has contributed to your, your overall infrastructure and condition of your, your, your village. So you had, you had a surplus when you look at the government-wide level on a full accrual basis. That's just the same way that a business would account for things. You pay down a little bit of debt. And you know, like every other municipality, we've talked about this in the past. You have what's known as OPEB and pension. And, and those are pretty significant costs on your, on your balance sheet. And right now there's really no way to, to fund OPEB. Just like in years past, there's always talk about allowing municipalities to fund it. But nothing right now that you can do about that. The funds continue to perform very well. You know, again, some, some stats that, that we look at is unrestricted as a percentage of total expenditures. Expenditures have crept up because of a lot of capital outlays. And so while this, this total has trended down a little bit, you, you have a significant amount of reserves as well. So the village really has done a nice job of positioning itself for uncertain events if they were to pop up. And having money on hand for those capital projects that, that are ongoing. So a very good job of, of managing those, those ratios and keeping the village on good financial footing. As mentioned, the expenditures increased primarily As mentioned, the expenditures increased primarily because of capital outlays. You got a bunch of projects you were working on, a bunch of equipment you acquired. Your Main Street street case was still in progress at the end of 2025. But again, everything was reconciled and properly supported from our perspective. The electric fund did well. I left this last bullet point in. We presented on this last year. But, you know, one of the things that the the village had done was a rate study submitted that. And so that revenue is is now coming in. And, you know, so we did generate a surplus from operating income of about $832,000. And then when you factored in I'm going to delete this part. When you factor in the total revenues, you had a surplus of about $1.5 million, largely due to some other revenues that were recorded. So financially speaking, everything went quite well. From a federal single audit perspective, this was the program we audited, and this snip is right out of the right out of the federal compliance supplement. And you can see, it basically is a very scripted audit, is the way I look at it. It kind of explains exactly what you need to do. And so these A and B activities allowed, unallowed, that's basically making sure you spent the money on proper, on what was permissible. In some instances, and I believe this was the case, there was a match. And so making sure that you matched the appropriate amount. Did you follow the procurement, suspension, and debarment rules? Yes. So we're testing requirements when it comes to the federal single audit, not necessarily the financial attributes. And so all those were laid out in this compliance supplement. And again, we had no compliance findings as it relates to your federal program. So a clean opinion there. Similarly, whenever you spend $750,000 in federal awards, if you spend $750,000 in state DOT awards, you trigger another audit, and you were lucky enough to do that. And so the program was CHIPS. The program and audit requirements are all laid out in this local projects manual published by the State Transportation Authority. And so that's the basis for conducting the audit over the DOT funds. Again, we sampled some dispersments, made sure that they were adequately supported. They complied with the project requirements, that the bids were done properly. And again, no noncompliance matters that we would report to you as part of the audit. Last two slides are just some communications. There is a separate letter, but similar to past years, we really do enjoy working with Fairport. I came out myself this year. Due to some changes in staffing, I came out with one of our our new senior associates. And so we came out and we did really well in the field. Anything we requested was provided to us. You know, the accounting policies are appropriate in the context of US GAAP and reporting. Nothing odd came to our attention, no unusual transactions, no odd documentation. Accounting estimates were adequately supported. Nothing material from an error perspective. The Village of Fairport between Megan, Cook, and Holly combined, you have one of the better accounting departments in our portfolio of clients for sure, and we have over 100 municipal clients. So you do have a really good crew out there. Makes the audit process pretty smooth. Nothing, no, no compliance matters as noted, no difficulties encountered. And so these presentations tend to be pretty straightforward for me because there's really not too much to tell. Of course, if there's any detailed questions you might have or any areas you're interested in, we could of course, you know, answer those questions for you, but those were my prepared remarks.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions for Brendan at this time? Okay. Brendan, thank you very much for telecommuting today.
No, no problem. Not a problem. We were out there in August. We had a nice time.
I saw you. I saw your team here. And thank you for a clear explanation of what your team did with regard to audits to FMC and with with FMC and with also with the village as well. We're glad to have you here to check up on us.
Yeah, of course. Anytime. So, you know, without any further questions, I'll let you guys get back to your meeting. But as I always tell the mayor and the board, you folks are welcome to reach out to me whenever you want. I know we have these meetings once a year, but if there's anything that comes to your attention during the year, any questions you might have about the audit approach, or the work we're doing, or what's going on, we're always happy to speak with you folks. So just let us know.
Hey Brendan, just a quick comment. And I think this is just probably a policy, but you, when you always email us letting us know that you're going to be here ahead of time, it's always helpful so that if we have questions beforehand, you know, we have that opportunity as well. So we appreciate that.
Of course.
I think that's it. Thank you so much for being here with us tonight. Megan or Brian, do you have anything else on this? Okay. Thanks. Have a great evening. And again, thank you for joining us live during this meeting.
Our pleasure. Enjoy the rest of your meeting. Bye now.
Thank you. Are we going to just shut the, okay. Are we going to put the agenda up or just leave it off? Okay, that's fine. All right. So that will take us to, by the way, thanks. Thanks for setting this up this evening. It's greatly appreciated by the board to have Brendan give this presentation live. The next item on the agenda is going to be Citizens Forum. So if there was, hopefully, we already got that straight. If there was anybody who wanted to comment during Citizens Forum that you signed in on the Citizens Forum sheet versus the public hearing sheet. And at 6:22, I'm going to open Citizens Forum. There was nobody who wanted to sign up for Citizens Forum? Okay. Then we will close Citizens Forum at 6:23 and move on to the presentation by Superintendent Matt Hegarty from Fairport Municipal Commission. Thank you for being here tonight, Matt. I asked Matt because I was at the Fairport Municipal Commission meeting this morning if he would come and give the same information that he gave to the commissioners to the village board to give a little background on what happened on Friday morning with FMC and with the power situation. So I appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you for inviting me. So, good evening. Just a few things. I want to go over a few facts. So let's talk about the power outage of Friday morning, December 5th. The outage affected all 17,997 Fairport customers. That is every customer that we have. Yes, it was eight degrees outside. Started at 6:18 a.m. I can tell you exactly where I was. I was on Main Street looking at the Christmas lights when all the lights went out. We had 60% of our customers restored at 7:26 a.m. All customers were restored at 8:46 a.m. And there's a lot that goes into that. So let's start with. Fairport does not generate any electricity. We purchase the power from New York State. We get it from New York Power Authority, which is our hydro. Then we buy it from other agencies to fill in that supplemental when we go above our hydro, to meet the hourly demands of the system. National Grid owns the transmission lines. You see these through Fairport. These are the steel towers. These are the large conductors. This is what gets the power from Niagara Falls, from other generating stations across the state and to Fairport. So National Grid owns those lines. They maintain those lines. National Grid had a failure on the lines that serves Fairport. So unfortunately, when National Grid has an outage, it does affect all of us here in Fairport. This was the, only the second time in the 36 years I've been here that Fairport was completely in the dark. The last time was 1998 in the Labor Day windstorm, where we were out for two days completely in the dark. This time, it was a little more than two hours. So one of the big things that we talk about is it's eight degrees. We all know, we all have a lot of electric heat. Electric heat is a big problem to restore power, especially on this magnitude. When we have all of our customers out of power, electric heat, when we turn them back on, it all comes on at once. And no system is designed for that. So it has to be done in stages. We were able to get 60% of our system up. Most of that 60% was homes with gas heat, very limited electric heat. We had to stage the electrically heated homes in. We kind of had rolling blackouts as we brought people back online. One of the things we just need to remember is we lose diversity and we go towards electrification, this could get worse. So I want to truly credit my team, their work behind me. This is an amazing job by this team. They knew exactly what to do. They know where to go. And we took care of the issue. It happens very rarely. Without the expertise of that team, this could have been a much longer duration outage. So to restore 18,000 customers in a little over two hours is truly the credit of the people that work at Fairport Electric. Questions?
Can you talk, this morning, you talked a little bit about the need to have folks staged at the different substations because of that surge that would happen if you just said, okay, let's just put everybody on. Can you talk just briefly about that?
Yeah, we monitor our substations through a system called SCADA. When everything goes down, this is also the ideal time for IT to have failures also. You know, so we had zero communication between our substations. So it was truly the people inside the fences giving me the information so I could make good decisions. You know, these are qualified guys, employees. Some have been here very little time, but smart individuals. We've taught them well. They're able to give me good information. We can make good decisions to try to restore power. You know, our biggest focus is to restore power quickly, but also it's to be done reliably. If we don't do it reliably, it could cascade and go the other way, and it could be a much longer duration. I mean, in the past, we have actually had subdivisions that, one subdivision, it was about 150 houses, took us 26 hours to restore. Because when it's that cold and all this electric heat tries to come on at once, it literally has to be done in pieces. So having the right people inside communicating back with us was really, really important on Friday morning.
When you have stressors to the system like that, do you have a debrief afterwards to go, we did this well? We need to improve on this. We need to improve on this. This, we did well. Will something like that happen?
We actually had that Friday afternoon. Once we all took a deep breath, we continue to have them this week. You know, one of the things we practice on an annual basis is an instant response plan, and this one worked really well. I was able to reach out immediately to Manager White. He was able to get press releases out so we could get information out. We could start our Everbridge notification to our customers so that people in operations could truly work on operations. You know, those are tasks that are kind of assigned ahead of time. We do practice them. Are there, there's always things that we can improve on, and we'll improve, you know, each time. We'll improve on this one also. We do have staff that, we have some staff that are out at this time for various reasons. You know, and we're a small staff. We have to remember that. We all wear a lot of hats. So when those people are missing, you know, those are voids that have to be filled in by somebody else. But everyone stepped in and they did a good job. But yes, we do multiple debriefs. We'll continue to do them over the course and try to be better prepared for the next one when it happens.
Yeah, tomorrow morning, there'll be a debrief.
Correct.
Can you just speak to something that I think the community hasn't quite gotten from an education perspective of what smart meters mean to FMC in terms of if your power goes off, that what happens with the smart meter?
And I want to caution the term smart meter. So.
Correct. However you want to describe it.
So smart meters are meters that customers can log in, get all the information back out. And we don't have those meters yet. You know, we will offer them in the future for people that do want that. The meters we have are a different meter reading system that we had now, but one of the capabilities this system does have, it tells us when people are out of power. We started this about a year ago. The system's been in place for a little over 12 months. And we did see problems with that system also with this, you know, it works very well in small events. This large event, we found some anomalies that we have to fix, and we will. But yes, so this meter will tell us when the customer's out of power. And one of the things that people didn't realize before is, we had no idea when people had power or not, until they called us. You know, and then we could start to piece these together where if three people called on a street, we'd say, okay, the street's out. You know, we had no way of knowing. If we lose large portions of the system, we see that at the substation. But individual streets, individual customers, we didn't know until they called. And now we see those things. We can react quicker and more efficiently.
Can, with the way the system is set up, because I know you've gone through a whole bunch of programs where you get reporting back from out in the field, can you tell when streetlights go out?
We, on Main Street, as part of the new streetscape, we actually can. We actually have a system in place along Main Street that we can dim the streetlights. We can dim them individually. We can tell when they go out. Is it a perfect system? No. But it's, we're learning how that operates also, making improvements. Can we incorporate that through the village? Yes and no. I mean, there'll be places where there's communication problems, but we hope to, you know, at least incorporate that through most of the village so we can know when they're out, when they don't go out, and they stay lit all day long, et cetera.
I have one last question, and then I'll open it up to the board. I, these are all things that I heard this morning, and I'm like, I really want to make sure that we touch on some of this stuff. So is there a live 24/7 phone line at Fairport Municipal? So if a street light goes out versus maybe if you lose power at your house, that you could call there and say, hey, there's a problem? Or there's a tree that just went down on a line?
Yes, we have a real live person working 24/7 at the operations center that to answer your phone call. With that being said, when we have large outages, we have 13 incoming lines. We can only answer so many at a time. Friday morning, we had 13 people answering the phone. So when the 14th person calls, they do get a busy signal. This is where social media and our Everbridge system, our notification system, is so important. We can put out the notifications, say we're aware of the outage. We do have messages, you know, when they do get in. Says we're experiencing high call volumes. But yes, there is a person there 24/7 to answer your phone. You know, to deal with not just electric, they deal with the Fairport DPW. So for snow plowing and other questions like that, along with animal control, if people need that.
I get that. I'm going to start over here. Did you have anything?
I don't have any questions, but I did want to say thank you because I had a high schooler that was getting on the bus while this, or maybe getting on the bus during this time. So I appreciate how quickly all the decisions were made about the school and getting, being able to get the kids safely back on the buses and home and where they could be warm and, or just tell the kids to stay home. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Communication's key. And we have great communication with the town parenting. We have great communication with the school district. And all of these things are happening behind the scenes constantly. You know, and they happen long before these events happen. So it's just easy to happen during these events.
Emily, did you have anything?
Did we hear from National Grid what the initial cause of the problem was?
They have a conductor down. That was what they found. They took them all day long to put it back up. You know, what caused it, I don't know. It's their system, you know, they, but yes, they had a conductor down.
And then I think obviously the review of an event like this is super important to learn from. You know, these experiences are only good if we walk away being better, right? And just a thought, and this never occurred to me because, you know, this doesn't happen very often, but our traffic lights. So if people were on the roads driving, our traffic lights had no power.
So how traffic signals work? The village only owns three. So we own the Village Landing. We own the one at Potter and Church and Parker Street Bridge. The rest are owned by the county or the state. The state does have generator hookup. So if we were back into an ice storm or a long duration event, they actually have methods to put generators at the traffic lights. But, you know, we could have a small interruption of power, maybe affecting just Church Street and just that traffic signal. People need to remember, as we're all taught at 16 years old, you know, it's a four-way stop. People do forget. So, yeah.
Thank you to you and your team.
Thank you.
Tracy, did you have anything?
Nothing new to add, but thank you. And we appreciate your team and how they responded so quickly. When you look at it into the bigger perspective, second outage in 25 years and lived from, you know, 20 hours to.
Yeah, so thank you. I do have a great team.
Thank you so much for being here. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
And I'll see you tomorrow. Have a good night, Matt. Thank you. From there, we will move to the public hearing for, this is not a public hearing for local law number three. This is just a public hearing for the zoning code. Okay, so, but we will have another public hearing. Okay. Yeah, why don't you do that, please, John?
Procedurally, so as, as the board is aware, and I'm sure many of the members of the public are aware, so for the, for the duration of this year, we've been working on the zoning code update. So once that law was deemed to effectively be in final form for final review, that local, that law was converted, that update was converted into a local law, which is the mechanism to redo our zoning code. So that's local law number three. If you see local law number three, it's effectively attaching the entire zoning code update as an exhibit. So that, under municipal home rule law, that has to go through a public hearing process. And so that, that is what is before the community tonight, which is local law number three of 2025. Local law number four of 2025 is to modify and repeal any provisions that are inconsistent with local law number three. So if this board were to adopt local law number three, we have to go in and clean up sort of the other chapters that are being updated and replaced. And so that's sort of a more of a kind of procedural cleanup law. If the board were not to pass local law number three, then local law number four becomes unnecessary. So that's why they were separated out in the way they were. So one step, first step is the zoning code. Second step for the next meeting would be the cleanup of the other chapters.
So just to clarify, local law number three, we don't have it on our agenda to vote on it tonight?
That is correct. It is just a public hearing.
Is it incorporated or a separate step that we would see when we have local law number four in front of us?
Yes, so if the board were to wish to proceed after tonight, and for example, if you were to close the public hearing and move forward with that process, then a resolution to adopt local law number three would be placed on the next agenda for the village board to consider the adoption of that law.
Okay, and then we would also be opening up local law number four at the next meeting with a public hearing? And the seeker would happen for local law number three at the next meeting?
Yes.
Is there a separate seeker for local law number four?
The seeker will cover both laws. So it's a unified approach. We do one environmental review and then the actions that happen as a result of that can occur one after the other if that is the desire of this board.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Because I just wanted to clarify that before we got into this.
John, local law number four, you said is to clean up any revisions that were made to the local law number three?
So for example, we have a standalone chapter that deals with swimming pools. And the new zoning code will actually be regulating in the area of swimming pools. And so we have to make sure that our existing code is consistent with the new zoning code. So there's other chapters that are around the zoning code, which I think Jill is, what, five fifty-one? Is that the new chapter? So we have other chapters within the town code, or the village code, excuse me, itself that, that are regulating in areas that the new zoning code is also updating. So we just have to go back and clean up certain other chapters. I think swimming pools is one and the other's escaping me. Vehicles outside, parking of outside vehicles, there's a chapter that deals with that as well. That's also being regulated now in the new zoning code. So Jill and Mark had gone through each of those chapters and given me a comprehensive list of, you know, changes that needed to be made in those other chapters to make sure it conforms to the new zoning code. So that's what local law number four is designed to accomplish.
Tracy Briggs, do you have any questions?
Nope, they're like mud. It'll come to you though.
Okay. Think of it as, let's say, inside the zone, inside the code itself, not the zoning code, but the code itself, there was a chapter about parking, how wide your driveway can be. It, let's say it was separate. In this case, it was swimming pools. It's now incorporated into the new zoning code. So local law number three is the adoption of that. Local law number four is going back and saying, okay, you have these separate chapters inside of the entire village code. Since you took swimming pools and put it inside of the zoning code, it no longer, no longer needs to be a separate chapter. This will clean up those chapters that existed outside of the code previously. Okay, with that said.
I'll say one more thing.
Sure, go ahead.
That second local law is not designed to make any changes that are not already contemplated in the zoning code update. So we're not changing the zoning code by virtue of a law that comes immediately after that. What you're adopting in local law number three is effective, is the zoning code. So you should look at it as, are you comfortable with that local law? If the answer is yes, the second law is really just ministerially making sure that nothing is in conflict with what you just adopted.
Okay. So before we open the public hearing, I just want to go through a couple of the ground rules that we have for guidelines on public comment. Speakers will be recognized by the presiding officer, that's me. Speakers must step to the front of the room and state their name and address. Speakers should limit their remarks to five minutes or less. Speakers may not yield any remaining time they have to another speaker. Board members may, with the permission of the mayor or the presiding officer, interrupt a speaker during their remarks, but only for the purpose of clarification of the specific information that they're talking about. We won't be answering any questions. This is just for you to share remarks about the zoning code. And speakers must observe, and audience members must observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, good taste. And if we have folks who are interrupting people who are speaking or acting out, I'll ask you to leave. So please keep, keep control of your comments in the group. And with that, at six forty-one, I will open the public hearing. I have some written remarks that I'll share after we have our live speakers. And Megan, you have the list over there. Would you like to invite someone to come up and speak, please?
The first name we have is James Herendine, fifty-five miles Ave.
Good evening.
Thank you for this opportunity to meet with you tonight. On the way here, I noticed how beautiful, extra beautiful Fairport looks at this time of year. I'd like to give a special shout out to the Public Works Department for their hard work in picking up alleys and putting up all that holiday decor in the bitter cold weather. I truly enjoy seeing the lights throughout the village. I recently looked at the "Visit Us" section of the village website. I love the description of Fairport and the vision it presents. It talks about past visitors on the Erie Canal that deemed this destination a fair port. It then brings us up to our current residents, who dwell in porch-friendly Victorian homes on tree-lined streets in quiet neighborhoods. Traveling through the village and crossing the lift bridge, I see successful businesses. To my left, I see Jeff and Haley's place. To my right, I see Damien's place. Just over the tracks, I see Tommy's place. I use the first names to make it a little more personal because it's these owners and their patrons working together with village officials that have made these places successful. That place, that vision would become diminished if the village would proceed with the idea of permitting construction of four-story buildings. The allure of Fairport would not be the same if the size of some buildings blocked the view of these businesses, the trees, or the canal. Other places wish they look like Fairport. I don't support that we look like other places. I mentioned that people dwell in porch-friendly Victorian homes on tree-lined streets in quiet neighborhoods. When the word dwell gets changed to the word dwellings, it becomes cause for concern. The idea that these once quiet neighborhoods may be allowed to construct dwellings that house temporary renters seems quality, contrary to the quality of life that currently exists. Heaven forbid that we have to call upon our guardian angel Clarence to maintain our wonderful life so that a beautiful street like Potter Place does not become Potter'sville. Yearly, my neighbors have been featured on doors of Fairport and porches of Fairport where the picturesque fronts of houses are photographed for a poster. These kinds of tributes complement the homeowners' efforts being made that keep Fairport beautiful. As I look down the street, I can see those porch-friendly houses with their prideful owners. Now picture that image where an RV is kept in the driveway blocking that view. How much of a destination would Fairport become if the "Visit Us" section of Fairport was edited to include visions of RVs, dwellings, and four-story buildings? These proposals become easier to turn down if they were made while enjoying a walk on the canal or a view from your front porch. On my return home tonight, I will continue to admire the beauty of Fairport, a place where the vision has not been diminished, a place where the treetops glisten and quiet neighborhoods become silent nights, and the holiday decor enhances those Victorian homes. When it comes time to decide the path to see the best vision of Fairport, I hope you choose the road that allows you to see the lights.
Thank you very much. Okay, who's next, Megan?
Gabriel McNotten, twenty South Ave.
Thank you.
Do you want the teacher to help pass the papers?
Yes.
Not quite as tall, so. Gabriel McNotten, twenty South Ave. Give me a moment to pull up my notes, please. I'm here tonight as a resident of Fairport. And I want to speak in support of adopting the zoning code. I think it's a good thing. I think we need to redevelop and grow responsibly moving forward. That said, I'm concerned about the SEACER review that is before you tonight and what is in the record so far. And there's a couple of things, and you'll see it in the handout. My first letter here is my letter, and I'd like that to go on the record. I'll email this tonight as well. But if you move on to the next page, you'll see this is the signature page of the SEACER, or the EAF, the environmental assessment form that is in the record tonight for public comment. It is signed and dated July twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, which is a number of months before tonight. What that means is that we've got stale data in the record in front of you. When you move on to the next handout, you'll see my next point. I'm sure you all know this by now, but SEACER does require three primary things when you have a type-one action in front of you, which is what the zoning code update is. The first is that you take an assessment of any environmental, adverse environmental impacts in front of you. The second is that you take a hard look at those environmental impacts. And the third is that you have a reasoned elaboration of whether those impacts are actual or not applicable, right? You've proposed a negative declaration in the EAF based on information on an outdated form. But your second, second handout here is an EAF mapper that I printed today from the DEC website. And as you can see, there are a number of questions, answers that are in this EAF mapper that have been marked no on the previous, or left blank on the previous EAF. But the state is saying you have these exposures here in the village. That alone, if you go forward with a negative declaration based on this information, is factually inaccurate and could open the village up to liability. Moving on to the next, the last piece of the handout here, and I'll keep this short. You have, well, let me go back to the previous one. If you look at the EAF mapper, because we have the public here as well, there's a number of exposures here when you think about what actually is in the village. We have a number of, a large number of historical, or at least locations that are eligible for the historical register. We have Thomas Creek, which is an impaired creek. According to the DEC, we have wetlands, the Thomas Creek Wetlands. We also have hazardous waste sites. And we have, we have an aquifer underneath us as well. What SEACER allows you to do is take a look at each of those exposures, each of those potential impacts, decide whether they are significant, which arguably the state's already kind of saying they are, create the mitigation measures, understand how the new zoning code will, will impact those exposures going forward. And then create a reasoned elaboration, your justification for adopting the zoning code. Now, the only way to do that, given this information, is by completing a generic environmental impact statement. If you go forward with a negative declaration on local law number three, my fear is that you will have thrown away the hard work of Jill and the working group because you will be opening the village and the project up to liability in the future. And if it is adopted and we have development moving forward on a negative declaration that is found to be factually inaccurate, the remedy, and as far as the court is concerned, is annulment of that zoning code, which would result in, it would set any development back. You'd have to do a whole lot of more work in the future, excuse me, in the future. So the letter that I've shared with you has a lot of detail in it. I hope you take the time to review it. I've got three asks. Number one is to keep the record open. I don't think that this board is prepared or has the accurate record in front of it to adopt local law number three, rather to make a negative declaration with regard to local law number three. Number two is to find a positive declaration because that is how the state has seen this. And that is the responsible thing to do to enable development going forward. The third, the third ask is to complete that generic environmental impact statement. That GEIS is designed for acts and laws such as this zoning code. So with that, you can read the, read the letter in the record. It's got citation in it. You can look through that. Take a look at the EAF mapper. And at a minimum, the record does need to be updated before you make any, any declaration. DRI, yeah. I can go there if you like.
Well, no, it's not part of this hearing. I just.
Yeah, so a lot of. Yeah. I appreciate that. So, so in the overview of the zoning code adoption, right, there, the finding of no adverse environmental impact is frequently justified by a statement that there is not foreseeable development, that this is just a zoning code update and there is no foreseeable development. Simultaneously, in October, OSED shared that list, the third handout here, of potential projects for public comment for the DRI grant application. And so the connection here is that you, as a board, then on November fourth, adopted or supported that grant application. And what that does is it makes the zoning code basically prerequisite to further development. And so that, that comment, that argument that development, future development is not foreseeable, it just isn't true because we do see a lot of development in our future. We do have that within the comprehensive plan. And at the same time that the village is going to the state to say, we have these projects in hand, we have these projects that we'd like to move forward with, here at, at least in the record, is stating that there's no development coming. And so it's a juxtaposition that just doesn't square.
Thanks for sharing that.
Thank you.
And we'll definitely have our attorney take a look at that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Megan, who's next?
Joe Thon, eleven West Street.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the name again?
Joe Thon, 11 West Street.
It's a long O, Thon. It's all good. Everybody does it. It's all good. Been growing up with it my whole life. My, thank you, board. My name is Joe Thon. I'm at 11 West Street. My comments are not as detailed and technical as those, so hard to follow suit with that one. But mine are more concerned about the impacts of what the zoning code will actually do to the village. I would just want to highlight some data from the State Comptroller's 2025 Report on ADU Projects. There has been a 1% to 2% annual uptake in villages like ours without strong caps. The village has roughly 1,800, give or take, single-family homes. And if that were to be passed, about 18 or 36 per year, give or take, would be added, in theory, to the village. The State Comptroller also notes that it's usually on the higher end when there's no owner occupancy rules or size limits. Even with the 650-square-foot proposal in the code, there's a lack of owner occupancy, which would drive the rate higher, closer to 2% or 30 to 36 ADUs being built. The HUD backs it. 80% of ADU conversions become long-term rentals driven by investors chasing cash flow. Essentially, in five years, 144 of the 180 ADUs built in the village could potentially operate as like a long-term rental, which isn't a bad thing. But I just want you guys to understand, that's where the growth is going to go. It's going to go to investors building rentals on their own home that they buy because there's no owner occupancy restriction. That is not density for locals. It's gentrification in reverse. It's displacing the missing middle class that the comprehensive plan intends to help. Worse off, those ADUs fuel short-term rentals. Of those 144 units, New York State studies show that 25% of the 144 will convert to Airbnbs within two years. You know, our charm draws tourists, commodifying West Street or canal paths into investor playgrounds kills it. Pending short-term rental regulations in Article 5 are a start, but without residential bans, they're meaningless. We need to cap short-term rentals village-wide at 1% to 2%, or 25 to 50 units, with strict annual permits, noise fines, and parking enforcement. This all ties to the Village DRI push, which I support, especially the Blue Collar Housing Project. But without safeguards, it's more of the same story. We need to require family mandates for family-sized units of two to three bedrooms with priority for housing holds with kids. We do not want to let developers get away with building family units that are studio or one bedrooms, as they've done in the past. This ensures we keep young families here and not just investors with micro-units. I'm speaking to urge you to reject or heavily amend Articles 4 and 13 of this draft code. On paper, blanket ADU approvals and density bonuses promise missing-middle houses and attainable options. Unfortunately, in reality, their supercharged investor conversions accelerate gentrification and undermine the very affordability and character that the comprehensive plan is intending to provide. Please consider delaying this vote. Amend it for residents first. Fairport deserves better, and our families deserve better. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna, again, ask you not to respond, please. Thank you. Okay, who do we have next, Megan?
Jan Williams, 205 Packets Glen.
Hi, I'm Jan Williams, 205 Packets Glen. And I'm here to speak up in favor of ADUs and multifamily homes. And I'll start by saying that I don't believe the Village Board intends to change the character of Fairport by updating the zoning code, as some residents believe. I do wish, however, that the update went even further to allow ADUs in more neighborhoods. The zoning code update provides guidelines around those types of housing to make sure they fit in with the neighborhoods while providing options in the local housing market. I've lived in some form of multifamily housing for most of my adult life as a renter, from college dorms to high-rise apartments to townhouses, some of which housed hundreds of very nice people just like me. In one building, I lived across the hall from Santa Claus. You could hear him coming home from a gig this time of the year because he was wearing jingle bells. I believe that single-family homes should never be the only option in any neighborhood. And there are many reasons that people prefer to be a renter instead of a homeowner or to live in multifamily buildings instead of a single-family home, from financial to personal preference to lifestyle. My preference has always been to live in a multifamily building, and I'm sure I'm not the only person who's glad that type of housing is available here in Fairport and would like to see more of it available. My neighborhood on West Ave includes many renters and multifamily homes. A lot of the big homes that you see are already, they're divided into multifamily homes. And it's a beautiful, quiet, friendly place with people walking their dogs all the time. It's beautiful. So more multifamily homes are not necessarily negative with more renters. Thanks.
Thank you, Jan.
Natasha Bash Turner.
Welcome, Natasha.
When does public speaking get easier? I don't know yet.
Just imagine that you're just having a conversation with one of us, and there's nobody else in the room.
Natasha Bash Turner, 94 Halbert Avenue. I'm at that new reading glass stage. Okay. Dear members of the Fairport Village Board, as always, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I understand the revised zoning code hasn't been approved yet. Thank you for that explanation of the process. I didn't quite understand the agenda, so I appreciate that explanation. And I think we all need to acknowledge that too much time and effort and money has gone into this revision and that there's really no appetite for big change anymore. And so I urge all of you to approve this zoning code change so that we can get on with the important work of fixing it and minimizing negative impacts. The code as proposed reflects the anxiety of the people in this community, a fear that if things are good now, that change has to be worse. The proposed zoning code does a great job of trying to stop change from coming to Fairport, but change is here. In recent decades and years, Fairport has become whiter and older and less welcoming to our working-class neighbors, the very people who built Fairport, who are often featured in those old-timey photos I see in the Fairport Historical Society pages. Our declining school enrollment reflects that, and this code keeps us on that path. So just pass this restrictive code so we can start fixing it. Buying a house in Fairport isn't necessarily even a smart financial choice, and the proposed zoning makes it even more difficult for most people's biggest investment to ever be profitable. You can't rent a portion of your house. You're limited in the type and size of businesses allowed, if you're even allowed to have a home-based business at all. And you can't even sell electricity from rooftop solar back to FMC. Even a savings account kicks off interest, but a house here is so limited by the zoning and the proposed zoning that it will likely never even cover your property taxes. And yet, one of the best ways to ease the property tax burden on residents, to expand our commercial base and share the fixed costs of running a village across more people, is incredibly limited by the proposed zoning. So just pass it so we can start fixing it. We need to envision a Main Street that's bustling and safe and cozy. This zoning code makes it so hard to get there. There's nothing cozy about a single-story strip mall with a giant parking lot out front. That's obvious. When the stores are closed, the life is gone. But there is something inherently cozy about being surrounded by life. Adding height, especially apartments with balconies, will bring more life to Main Street. Sidewalks feel safe when they're not abandoned, but busy, like the farmer's market in July. I'm not the only one who would like to see fourth or fifth-floor walk-up apartments on top of cute shops, restaurants, and grocery stores. These places would be perfect for a young professor recently hired at one of our local universities or a newly-married couple starting a small business. To move to Fairport now means that unless you want a single-family detached house with high property and maintenance costs and a big time commitment, you're not welcome here. So just pass this defensive zoning code so that we can fix it and welcome them back. We've got to move on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Natasha.
Nancy Shad, 18 Fifth Avenue.
Hi, Nancy.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Shad. I reside at 18 Fifth Avenue. And I was just thinking, I've been there a long time, and I don't know why, but I sold a beautiful condo to come and live in the village of Fairport. So I have quite an investment. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll make mine quite quick. I think the input from village residents has consistently focused on the charm of this historic village on the Erie Canal with its many well-maintained charming homes in close-knit proximity to each other and the walkability to many excellent businesses, shop local. There is an overarching character to this village that is key to preserve, which residents and the Village Historic Preservation Commission has pointed out in respect to some of the characters or some of the proposed zoning codes. Number one, this is contrary, the recommended building height should not exceed three stories in the downtown district. It just would change the character. Number two, allowances for recreational vehicles to be parked in driveways from November to April. I personally say absolutely not. My driveway is right on top of my neighbors. As our most residential driveways and many residents have shared driveways, having a large RV parked in a driveway is so unsightly, it's frankly annoying, and totally out of character for this village. Owners of RVs can find, you know, off-site parking and support a business. So the issue of ADUs is one of the codes that has received the most public outcry with a variety of concerns, some favorable, some not. But I do feel that the ADUs is something that really needs to be better defined, better regulated, and perhaps limited to certain areas that do permit higher density. So I hope you will listen to the objections of my voice and to the other neighbors who have come. I respectfully submit this. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Nancy. I just wanted to make sure, because there were a couple people who got here late. Were you looking to speak? Okay, I just want to check in, and I think, because I hate to see people standing. If you want to grab a chair out of the conference room, please. Okay, I just wanted to check and make sure because I didn't want you to have to stand for that. Okay, Megan, who's next, please?
Bob Cantwell.
Hi, Bob, welcome.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Bob Cantwell. I live at Number 3 Fifth Ave in the village. I have submitted formal comments to the board in advance of that. However, I would like to make a few comments that over the last couple of years, I've tried very hard to educate myself. My comments are most generally associated with the accessory dwelling units. So over the last couple of years, I've tried very hard to educate myself. I've attended a lot of the workshop meetings, many, many, many times have been in front of you to raise questions about specifics as it relates to accessory dwelling units, how they're assessed, how they're approved, what standards in the code would be restrictive, what standards in the code would not only support what we want, but also what we don't want as it relates to accessory dwelling units. So that's kind of a precursor for my comments. My written comments to the Village Board, I am writing to express serious concerns regarding the proposed zoning code revision that would allow accessory dwelling units as a permitted use in all residential districts. That's throughout the entire village, which has changed from the time that the code was first drafted, where it was only in certain residential districts that we were considering accessory dwelling units. While I understand the desire to expand housing options, the current proposal lacks the most basic safeguards needed to protect the character and long-term stability of our neighborhoods. Our comprehensive plan, developed with extensive public input and at significant financial cost, clearly identified neighborhood character as a core value of our community. This zoning code, as written, contradicts that priority for the following reasons. Number one, assuming that accessory dwelling units would be included in some fashion within the code, number one, is a special-use permit must be required. Allowing ADUs by right, as currently proposed and as simply requiring a building permit, eliminates any opportunity for residents or the appropriate board who might have approval authority or oversight to evaluate whether a proposed unit is appropriate for the specific context of the neighborhood. A special-use permit process is essential to ensuring compatibility, transparency, and community involvement in the approval process. Without it, this change becomes a blanket upzoning of all residential districts in the village. Number two, owner occupancy must be mandatory. Either the primary dwelling or the accessory dwelling unit must be occupied by the property owner. Without this requirement, single-family homes can be effectively converted into multifamily rentals, inviting investor ownership and absentee landlords. Communities such as East Rochester and Brockport have already experienced the negative consequences of similar policies and are now trying to reverse course. We should learn from their experience rather than repeat their mistakes. Number three, there's no data has been provided to support the claimed housing demand. And quite frankly, what is the target, if you will, from the standpoint of the housing that we are proposing within the community, the diversified diversity of housing? The village has referenced the concept of the missing middle, yet no local market demand study has been conducted to demonstrate an unmet need in our community. Moreover, there are, as I have commented to the board in the past, there are over 2,000 multifamily residential units immediately adjacent to the village on all four sides of the village in the town of Parenton, and that those are within walking distance, as we like to promote being a walkable community. Before dramatically altering zoning, the village should provide objective demand data showing that such a change is necessary and is desired. Number four, aging in place does not require ADUs. Residents who wish to house aging parents or family members can already build home additions under the existing code. ADUs are not the only means of supporting multi-generational living, and their impact extends far beyond the original. extends far beyond the original purpose once ownership of the property changes hands. Number five, increased density will strain infrastructure. Under the existing code, any significant interest increase in dwelling units, particularly if investor-owned, will place additional strain on water and sewer capacity. Electric service, which we've had a comment this evening on that, recycling, refuse, emergency services, community policing, parking, and traffic congestion. These environmental impacts, going back to the gentleman that spoke earlier, these environmental impacts must be carefully evaluated prior to adopting any zoning changes. In conclusion, I respectfully urge the board to amend the proposed zoning code to include the following critical safeguards. As I had previously mentioned, number one, require a special use permit for all ADUs. Number two, require owner occupancy in either the main dwelling or the ADU. Number three, relook at certain zoning districts where ADUs could be permitted and more appropriate than throughout the entire village. If these protections are not included, I ask the board to reject the current proposal and revise it to better reflect the values clearly expressed in our comprehensive plan and throughout the code update community engagement process. Thank you for your time, your service, and your consideration of these concerns. I trust the board will make a decision that reflects both responsible smart growth planning and long-term vision of our village. Otherwise, as has been mentioned by some of the previous speakers, you will have communicated a message to real estate investors, landlords, and property managers that the Village of Fairport is in fact for sale. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thanks Bob. Okay.
Margaret Frank, 44 Park Circle. And I believe there's three other proxy statements that are going to be read after.
Okay, if, um... Is that the same thing as, nevermind. I'm just looking at what our policy is with giving time over to other people, and I'm sure it's no big deal, but...
But I was told that we could do proxy tonight.
Megan, that came from the email that you sent to Connie Murphy.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'm actually going to be Tom Frank first. That's my husband. Tom Frank at 44 Park Circle Drive. This is to the Village Board, Village Planner Jill Liedrich, and Village Manager Brian White. My name is Tom Frank, and I live at 44 Park Circle Drive in the Village. I've been following the update of the draft code for the Village of Fairport for the past one to two years. I have concerns about what has been being discussed in recent meetings concerning accessory dwelling units, ADUs. My understanding was that ADUs would be allowed in certain parts of the Village, but not the entire Village. I remember that in the public comments made after the original round one outreach, that most of the residents did not want ADUs in the Village. I also recall that during a Village Board meeting that I attended, the board chose to limit where new ADUs could be built and that existing units, granny flats, would be grandfathered in. My understanding now is that recent language for ADUs has been changed again to be allowed in the entire Village. Not only was I under the impression from feedback that a majority of residents do not want that, but such a situation would certainly not fit in the southeast section of the Village that is a suburb nature. I understand that ADUs make sense for some family situations, but if you open up ADUs to be allowed in the entire Village, that opens it up to become rental units. This adds load to the infrastructure and traffic. It can also substantially change the nature of a suburban village setting, which we bought in two years ago to raise our family. Fairport is a quaint suburban village with a mix of housing types, many historic. The southeast neighborhood consisting of the streets listed below is substantially newer 1960s and spread out a bit more than the historic older portions of the Village, like many housing tracts in the town of Parenton. When you walk these streets, you would not at all equate it with a rental area, so why would you now allow or even promote that? To have voted or agreed to carve it out in that meeting only to put it back in indicates it as being promoted or even forced upon us. This is the southeast neighborhood, Winding Brook, Misty Pine, Blue Spruce, Red Maple, Manor Hill, Park Circle, and a few attached small cul-de-sacs, White Alder Circle, Butter Knot, and Silver Birch. There may also be houses on Turk Hill and Route 250 that are of the same nature. A couple of years ago, there was a proactive effort in this neighborhood to stop the Village Board from thinking about allowing development on the three green spaces embedded in this neighborhood. According to the Parenton historian, those spaces were required by the Village Government when the land was transferred from the town to the Village for this housing development. Thank goodness the Village recognized our request and determination and then complied by publicly agreeing to keep it green space. Before approving, please revert the draft back to what you agreed to in that meeting several months to at least exclude ADUs from the southeast suburban neighborhood listed above. The consultant and others had agreed that the character in this neighborhood is in fact characteristically different suburban within the Village footprint. Now expanding the concept to the entire Village, why do residents of Fairport need ADUs in a large swath of the Village? There have been exceptions and variances based on past needs and pre-existing structures. I reject the premise that the code must be loosened to cover all pre-existing nonconformities to the code. I would think code could be written, as was discussed at a board meeting, to allow for variances, grandfather pre-existing, and gain special approvals on future ones where they are justified with code that provides guardrails on the exceptions. Think about how AI is rapidly changing the world. How do we do business and live? And we can't manage a list of exceptions to the code? Has there been enough commentary from the actual residents to determine in a transparent manner that there is a desire to current Village citizens and property owners to build ADUs all across the Village? They should not be influenced by forces outside the Village that do not own here or live here or vote for our representation in local Village offices. The same can be said of making Fairport a destination. We have a nice variety of shops, restaurants, bars, and other offerings, such as an exceptional library and farmer's market. Can a few more nice places be created or constructed? Sure. Some buildings renovated? Definitely. But to say we should be a destination seems egotistical and a way to open up development that is not necessarily best for quality of life of the residents. The board and consultants have often referred to at least parts of the Village as city-like. I thought it was more like a quaint village. If we want to live in a city, I know one about 10 miles away where I used to live. Although I understand that we generally want services in the area and visitors, and some good business comes with it, but destination seems beyond what our elected representatives should aim for. Anyone who drives into the Village during peak times knows parking is already difficult in many areas. With more density from ADUs, apartments, and destination-type businesses comes more traffic strain on our infrastructure. The max height of buildings should hold into this discussion, too. Three to four stories in certain spots, okay. Ed typical solar and panel structures on top, sure. Increasing to five stories, why push that? Is there an agenda like a backroom hotel deal in the works? Do certain developers want to build taller apartment buildings on smaller footprints? More density, more traffic, more need for parking, and probably more loss of quaint Village character. My hope is that you reconsider allowing wholesale ADUs in the entire Village or to minimize the southeast suburban neighborhood, as well as keep up the quality of life in our Village. And limit the building height to four stories of reasonable overall height. Keep Portland weird and Fairport quaint, joke. Thank you, Tom Frank.
Thank you.
My name is Margaret Frank, and I live at 44 Park Circle Drive. My comments today, December 8th, are regarding the zoning code documents. On November 19th, 2025, I noticed a legal notice was filed with the DNC, and their legal notice section of the newspaper notifying citizens of Fairport of a public hearing on December 8th, 2025, to adopt the zoning code into law. In that notice, it instructed me to go to the clerk's office to review the code in person. I assume this is the legal version that the Village posted for citizen review in preparation for this public hearing. I went to the clerk's office on Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025, and due the code in person as instructed in the legal notice. I tried to compare it to the version on the website, which was dated November 2025, and noticed the page numbers were different for the particular item I was reviewing. The date on that version in the clerk's office was July 8th on the title page. It was impossible to read the entire 229-page document in the office to determine if it matched at 100% to the website where all of the zoning code project contact is stored. The file name of the website version was dated November 11th, 2025, titled Final Draft, November 2025. On Friday, December 5th, at 2:38, I received an evergreen update notifying me of the Board meeting on December 8th. Included in the agenda of 535 pages, there was another new version of the zoning code, now titled Final Draft, December 2025. The website was also updated with the same file. I do not know if the version in the clerk's office has changed, because I was only given one business day to view that version before this hearing. I do not think it's fair to expect me as a citizen to black time out of my only one business day to review the code in the office and compare the website version and the agenda version to the version in the clerk's office. On the website, there's a document titled Summary of Changes that does not refer to the changes from one version to another. Instead, it refers to the major changes from the current zoning to the new draft. Given the multiple versions of the code since last October, it does not allow for a meaningful public hearing when we still don't know which version you are voting on. Thank you.
Thank you.
I should have brought my water. Yes, thank you. I put it here so I don't drop it. To the Fairport Village Mayor, Berto Stees, Connie Murphy, 3 Manor Hill Drive, Fairport, New York, December 8th, 2025. Subject statement read by proxy, the December 8th public hearing on proposed local law, number three, zoning code update. I'm here to voice my deep concern regarding the proposed zoning code update, which threatens the character and economic stability of Fairport Village. Furthermore, I must challenge the validity of this entire process based on serious procedural and ethical failures. Number one, procedural failure, invalid hearing due to lack of meaningful access. The integrity of a zoning process under New York state law requires that the public must have been afforded a reasonable and meaningful opportunity to be heard. The Village's actions have destroyed this opportunity. Pattern of obsolete documents. The public has been consistently reviewing outdated material leading up to this meeting. The file available at the clerk's office was dated July 8th, 2025. The file posted on the Village website was dated November 11th, 2025, which was the document titled Final Draft, November 2025. Last minute file swap on Friday at 2:38 after the legal notice had been posted with the Democrat Chronicle November 19th directing the public to the Village's clerk's office to view the zoning code in person, it was identified there were multiple versions of the zoning code. The version in the clerk's office was different than the version posted on the website with the file dated November 11th, Final Draft, November 2025. On Friday, the website was updated with a new file titled December 2025. I would assume the legal copy in the clerk's office document is also simultaneously updated, making the final relevant code inaccessible until the beginning of the workday today. Impossibility of review. This is a 229-page document provided only one business day before this critical public hearing. The public cannot verify if the December 2025 draft is materially different because the Board deliberately denied the time necessary to perform the required legal comparison. Two, document conflict of interest, trustee Adam Bonoski. This matter involves a clear documented conflict that compromises the impartiality of the Board's review and poses a severe risk of public harm. Timing of employment. Trustee Adam Bonoski began employment with Fisher and Associates, the firm writing the zoning code in May 2025 during the period of the major and final code rewrite. Betrayal of public trust. The trustee only disclosed his employment to the public and his fellow board members on September 22nd, 2025, after my public comment was filed. Well, this public complaint prompted trustee Bonoski to recuse himself from approving the firm's invoices. He has refused to formally recuse himself from all discussion of votes related to the code's adoption. I would like it placed on the public record that trustee Bonoski's continued participation in this vote, despite his clear documented financial professional ties to the firm responsible for the work, creates unacceptable potential for public harm. His actions demonstrate a profound failure to place the interests of the Village above his own, thereby undermining integrity and fairness of this entire zoning process. Three, extreme height limits, 55 feet, and architectural degradation. The proposed 55-foot height limit in the commercial Main Street area is an extreme four-story-plus deviation that threatens our historic character and is wildly outstuck with our neighboring communities. Major outlier, a comparison of local municipal downtown height restriction shows that 55 feet is an outlier and completely inconsistent with established Village character preservation. The maximum allowed height is similar to traditional downtown or village center districts across local municipalities. It's typically 40 to 45 feet, three stories. Examples include Pittsburgh, 40 feet, Penfield, 45, Canandaigua, 40, Central Business, Honeyway Falls, 40 feet, and Geneva, 40 feet. Even the most intense commercial zoning in the comparative data, heavy commercial and Canandaigua or general business intended for larger-scale commercial activities, Honeyway Falls tops out at only 45 feet. Impact, our 55-foot proposal far exceeds these recognized limits, casting disproportionate shadows, creating a detrimental canyon effect on Main Street, degrading the human scale character that supports our community's property values. Four, unfettered density ADUs and unregulated short-term rentals, the lack of control over density on restricted ADUs and the complex absence of regulation for STRs will overwhelm our historic infrastructure, parking utilities, commercialize our neighborhoods, degrading the quality of life and residential character that is essential for stable long-term property values. I respectfully assert that this body cannot move forward with a vote on December 22nd, 2025, based on today's flawed hearing. My specific request is postpone the December 22nd, 2025 vote and re-notice the public hearing for a date that allows the public at least 10 business days to review the current final zoning code document. Formally require the immediate recusal of trustee Adam Bonoski from all further zoning code discussions and votes and initiate an independent review of the ethical context surrounding this code's preparation. Reject the proposed 55-foot limit and cap height at a maximum of 40 feet to align with regional standards for traditional downtown centers. Thank you for your attention to these critical matters of law, ethics, and community preservation. This is from Al Barolato, 3 Manor Hill Drive. Comments for consideration by Fairport Village Board, December 8th, 2025. As elected officials, the Board of Trustees has have a fiduciary duty to serve the interests of the Village residents. This proposed zoning code is an abrogation of this responsibility as evidenced by the following. The proposed zoning code allows for the development of accessory dwelling units in every residential district. This is not supported by the majority of residents as reflected in the citizen feedback provided during the public comment periods. It is also not supported by any policies in the comprehensive plan. The proposed zoning code allows four-story buildings in the downtown district with heights up to 55 feet through the special permit process. The majority of residents providing feedback during the public comments clearly do not support more than three-story buildings in the downtown district. The proposed building heights are also not supported by any policy in the comprehensive plan. The Village's environmental assessment report submitted with the agenda answered no to the statements that the proposed code may impact the Village's transportation system and energy supply. Most of the people who would be living in the ADUs permitted across the Village by the new zoning code would have access to a vehicle. All of them would need to use municipally-supplied electricity. The Village has provided no data showing that the proposed code will not impact the Village's transportation system or municipal energy supply as their environmental assessment report contends. Trustee Bonoski has been employed by the Fisher and Associates, the firm hired by the Village, to author the code since May 2025. This is a clear conflict of interest. If trustee Bonoski places his duty to serve the residents of Fairport as his highest priority in this matter, then he should recuse himself from any vote of the proposed zoning code. It may not be illegal to do otherwise, but it is clearly unethical. If the Village Board is serious about representing the interests of the people they have been elected to serve, it should take the following actions. If ADUs are going to be permitted in the Village, limit them to the residential transitional neighborhood district, limit building heights in the downtown district to no more than three stories, and recuse trustee Bonoski from voting on the proposed zoning code. Al Barolato.
Alsa? Thanks, Margaret. Yeah, you can take it. We don't need it back.
I need more. I did, but I won't. Look at the cow. What I wore this tonight for football.
There you go. Okay, Megan?
Kate Myers Emery.
Yeah, you can take it. We don't need it back.
I need more.
Okay, Megan?
Kate Myers Emery. Hi, I appreciate you having this public commentary. I'm Kate Myers Emery, 19 South Ave. I have been a village resident for nearly 40 years, which is wild to say. I grew up on Dewey Avenue. My grandparents lived on South Main. My aunt and uncle lived on Miles. Another aunt and cousin are on Homestead. My childhood best friend lived on Fifth and is now on Clifford. And I'm lucky enough to be on South Avenue. So it's very cool to have kind of my whole life and world kind of all within Fairport. And I hope that my kids decide to stay here as well. What makes Fairport such a magical place to live isn't just the people and the culture. It's being part of a small historic village. It's that Gilmore Girls Village vibe of being able to take a short picturesque walk to anywhere that you want. It's coming over the South Main Street hill and seeing the church steeple popping out through the trees and just like knowing that you're home, seeing the canal, seeing the lift bridge. But that character is fragile. It can be lost. When we let buildings be four stories tall, they steal focus away from that really cool historic landscape that we love. When my kids come to visit from college, what are they going to see when they come over South Main? Is it still going to be the trees and the church steeple? Or is it going to be massive apartment buildings that have gone up? When we let anyone have accessory dwelling units, the single-family homes get bought out by investors and turn into apartments, and the streets become overrun with cars from all these. And instead of a quiet street where my kids can ride their bikes, it becomes a busy corridor. And as someone who lives on a street that already has apartments and Airbnbs, some ADUs, I can tell you that having this diverse mix of people and housing options is wonderful and fantastic. But we don't need unlimited growth of these. We already have these options and we have ways to get more of those. And yes, we do need affordable housing. We do need a more diverse community. But Fairport is not going to fix what is a national housing crisis. And limiting new buildings to three stories is not going to slow progress. We've seen amazing things that have been done with repurposing old buildings. These types of changes that are being proposed will alter the feel of the village. It's going to block out views. It's going to change that historic nature. Please don't let your legacy as the leaders of our village be that you sacrificed our identity for density that is being veiled as progress. Let your legacy be that you listened to your community and regardless of your own personal feelings, you made a decision to keep Fairport looking and feeling like that small historic village that we all love. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Meyer. 51 Dewey Ave.
Jenny. Meyer. Mayer. Sorry. Hi, Jenny.
Hi.
Good to see you again.
Thanks. Kind of a fan.
I'm just saying, because I saw you at 8 o'clock this morning.
Right, I know. Jenny Mayer, 51 Dewey Ave. I'm here to speak in support of the zoning code revision. I really appreciate the immense amount of work it represents from the staff, the consultant, the village board, the volunteer land use boards, and this community. There's a reason that zoning codes don't change much. This was a huge undertaking, and I think the village should be proud of taking it on. And although I admit I did not read the hundreds of pages of code, I did review the narrative that's in today's agenda, which I assume Jill wrote, that connected the code revision to the comprehensive plan goals. I thought it was great to see the desires of the community as expressed in that document taken seriously, instead of the plan being put on a shelf or dismissed as unrealistic. As members of the board know, I am an advocate for climate action. While I expect that this code will be passed without any modifications, I would also like to challenge the board to consider ways that this document can help address some of the comprehensive plan strategies, like, quote, "taking necessary actions to reduce fossil fuel emissions," and, quote, "implementing smart growth practices." There are some simple options to do this. The one I would suggest is to allow more specially permitted uses in the residential neighborhoods. If individual property owners had the means or desire to put a triplex townhome or cooperative housing on lots that currently only allow a single owner, the village could increase the number of homeowners and have the higher population needed to help us have better transit options and support more businesses in the village center. Right now, those kinds of uses are limited to the residential transitional neighborhood, which the summary says is 16% of the village. But these things are basically impossible in the majority of the village, which is 61% of the village is the other residential neighborhoods. I have heard members of the board describe this code as a compromise between two sides: residents who don't want much to change and residents who want big changes. But I would just like to argue that one side in this decision is actually not subject to any compromise, and that is the reality of physics, that the carbon dioxide trapped in our atmosphere is changing Earth's support systems in ways that make our... changing Earth's support system that make our current human civilization possible. We have to accept the reality that the way we have organized ourselves in the last 100 years or so is going to cause suffering for our children and our grandchildren. Sorry. Let's rise to the challenge this poses to us by working together to reduce our contribution to climate change, and that means imagining a different village that is built to help us reduce fossil fuel use. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
The last person I have is Michael Santorello.
I'd like to withdraw my name.
Okay, so that's it for live speakers, correct? Okay, I have three letters to read into the record from individuals who emailed to Megan and myself. Their comments, the village board members all have copies of these at your seat. The first one I will read is from Andrew Rouse. Happy Monday. My name is Andrew Rouse. I reside at 155 West Avenue, Fairport, New York, and I am a former planning board member and chair for 21 years. Just so that people understand that, you can't be on the planning board if you don't live in the village of Fairport. So he's lived in the village of Fairport for at least 21 years. I want to thank the village for a comprehensive review and update of the zoning code. During my tenure on the planning board, we often dealt with conflicts between adopted plans and our antiquated codes. The new zoning code will certainly help elected and volunteer leaders of our community make better decisions consistent with the input from the community that informed the comprehensive plan and the zoning code. I am limiting my comments to a few considerations for the board as it weighs the adoption of the new zoning code. Number one, accessory dwelling units. I do not believe ADUs should be an as-of right or permitted use in any district. In all instances, ADUs should require a special permit. A special permit would provide a higher level of stringency and enforceability, especially if aligned with appropriate performance and design standards. I understand the rationale for only allowing ADUs within a primary structure. However, I do not agree with this approach. With appropriate and stringent performance and design standards coupled with a special permit, an ADU may be appropriate in a freestanding building. There are many exceptional examples of detached garages with a small apartment on the second floor for in-laws and families. The special use permit process can mandate design requirements to ensure for onsite parking, architectural consistency, lot setbacks, et cetera, are met and maintained. Number two is height restrictions in the business district. We dealt with this concern for many years and attempted to balance the realities of the market with antiquated codes. A new code addresses this concern well with the use of a special permit for four stories. I personally see no concern with buildings in our downtown core being four stories if contextually appropriate and complementary to the other adjacent structures. There are many design strategies to ensure appropriate scale and continuity. The greatest challenge the village will face is market realities driving scale. The cost of development, especially in a small footprint, one-off project, is significant. The allowance of a fourth story can often be the difference between a project penciling out or not. Thank you for the opportunity to provide my comments, Andy. The next letter I have is from Matthew Brown. And you know what? Matt did not put his address. It's Nelson Street, and I'm not going to get the... 46 Nelson Street. Dear Mayor, trustees, and village staff, I am writing to you regarding the proposed zoning code update. I am a 20-year resident of this village. The home I occupy is my first... my wife and I have ever purchased. We intend to keep it as our home for as long as we possibly can. When we first moved to Fairport, I had just graduated residency and completed half a year as a chief resident and secured a job as an attending physician with the Unity Health System, now Rochester Regional. We have raised our two sons, now 20 and 17, here. This is the only home that they have ever known. It is very likely that when my wife and I age out of our home, we will hand it over to one of them. I give you the above background because, quite frankly, I would think that the family of a young physician would be one that would easily sell to a community. However, given the current housing market, if I were graduating from residency today, I would be unable to afford any of the homes in our village at their current pricing, and the number of smaller homes, multifamily homes, and rentals is not a particularly large one. Simply put, the decisions we make about our housing stock are locking people out of Fairport to an alarming degree. I am encouraged that accessory dwelling units are being included in this zoning code update, and I am hopeful that when this code is approved, that those citizens of the village who have been opposed to them will see that they are not only to not be feared, but a necessary inclusion in our village to inject the lifeblood of new neighbors who do not need an entire house's worth of space, but are still worthy of taking part in all the benefits of living in Fairport. I hope that future zoning codes will see the loosening of proposed restrictions on accessory dwelling units, allowing greater variety of size, as well as detached ADUs to be permitted within our village. Thank you for the inclusion of both attainable housing and residential conversion for multifamily housing. These represent significant steps in approving the diversity of our village's housing stock, allowing people of a variety of income levels access to homes within Fairport. I hope to see further steps in this direction in the future. I am in favor of the proposed code update and hope that this will be approved by our village board. Thank you all for your work and endeavor. The last item I have is Rob Genthner. He didn't include... I know he lives on Potter.
It's at the bottom.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. Rob Genthner, 20 Potter Place. To whom it may concern, I am unable to attend this evening's zoning code update discussion. However, I wish to extend my support for the character-based zoning code update. As a longtime resident of the village, I appreciate a very thoughtful approach to complicated topics like zoning. I believe the village's process to review and update our zoning code has been a thorough one, taking into account a wide variety of perspectives and goals. Our Fairport community is a desirable place to live and work for a multitude of reasons. Some of these reasons include our walkability, our schools, our sense of pride in this little canal village, and the way so many people get involved in volunteer time with their neighbors to bring a life full of calendar events throughout the year. Because this community is a desirable destination, we are faced with interesting challenges, including how to best ensure a wide variety of housing options are available and attainable for anyone who chooses to live, work, and add to this special place. I believe this code update, and specifically the accessory dwelling unit component, is a valuable tool to enhance and diversify our housing inventory without significant disruption to the streets and neighborhoods we each call home. The ADU update will provide more housing options for those that wish to stay in the village but no longer choose to and are unable to maintain a single-family home in the village. Additionally, ADUs present a residential option for those who may not be able to afford a single-family home but still wish to live close to where they work or wish to have their children attend our great schools, even if a single-family home mortgage does not fit their budget. Regulations associated with these ADUs and the CBC Character-Based Code updates will ensure that the positive impact of additional housing that they create does not harm the village charm or property value we appreciate currently. Ensuring our village is an inclusive community for all is an important priority. I support this code update as a resource to support that initiative. My best, Rob Genthner. And that's all I have. I'll put out the call. Is there anybody who did not make it to the list who wanted to speak? Okay, go on, go on, go on. So with that said, the public hearing will close at 7:49 PM. Thank you to everybody who either submitted documents, took the time out of your schedules to be here tonight. We really appreciate hearing from each and every one of you, and it's great feedback for all of us. I appreciate it, and I know the rest of the board does too. Thank you. All right, so that will take us to unfinished business. If there's anybody who wanted to leave, you're welcome to leave. Jenny, we have to stop meeting like this. Actually, you know, I promised to ask Jill or John if there was anything that they needed to share before we moved on with the rest of the meeting. Are you good for tonight? Jill? Okay. John, are you good for tonight? I would, actually. I would like you to address that because it's on the record for tonight.
So at the mayor's request, I just wanted to address the issue of the conflict of interest regarding trustee Benoski. I can wait a minute to...
Yeah, just wait, just one minute. Hey, Mike, could you do me a favor? Can you just... You don't have to close both doors. Just close one door, and that will help a little with the sound. There we go. Okay. John, would you please address that?
Yeah, no problem at all, Mayor. So as the board is aware, consistent with a few of the public comments tonight, there have been other comments provided throughout this process regarding trustee Benoski and the perception of a conflict of interest regarding his employment with Fisher Associates to provide the board and the public some background into that. The law concerning conflicts of interest governed by two areas of law. So you have Article 18 of the New York General Municipal Law. That's a statute that New York State has adopted regarding financial conflict of interest, mostly. And then you have common law, which is created by the court system, regarding conflicts of interest, and then opinions of the New York State Comptroller and the Attorney General's Office. So all of those areas of law collectively are what we look to to determine whether or not a conflict of interest exists under New York law. And if so, what the appropriate course of action is with respect to that. So when this issue came up, it was reviewed, as I understand the facts, which some of which have been stated tonight. December 2023 was when the village entered into the contract with Fisher Associates to provide professional services for the village regarding the zoning code update. So a year and a half later, May of 2025, at that point, the contract was still open, but for the most part, the work of Fisher Associates was nearing its completion by that stage of time. Trustee Benoski became employed by Fisher Associates. My understanding is that his compensation with Fisher Associates is one of a salaried position. It's not dependent upon the contract of the village itself. He's not an equity owner. He doesn't gain compensation from Fisher Associates by virtue of his position there or the contract with the village. And his work at that firm is in a separate department entirely unrelated to the services that other members of Fisher Associates were providing to the village. So at the time this came up originally, he did consult the village attorney's office. My understanding is also consulted independently a professional association that regulates or governs his professional licensing. And collectively, the determination was made, and trustee Benoski, I believe, placed on the record at some point in the, I think it was early fall, if I'm not mistaken, that based on reviewing the facts, reviewing the applicable law in the area, it was determined that he does not have a conflict of interest, and he does not... and he does not need to recuse himself from deliberating or voting with respect to the amendments to the zoning code. So he did seek guidance on that, and it was provided. I can't go into the specifics in an open meeting because that is a privileged document that I provided each member of the trustees at the time. But I am obviously happy to provide further information and guidance as appropriate to the board and answer any questions it may have privately. And to the extent necessary, obviously, I can address anything in the follow-up meeting.
I think the only guidance that was issued that was appropriate for meetings was that if there was any kind of an invoice, because Trustee Bonoski reviews the invoices along with trustee, or trustee Woike, that if there was anything that had anything to do with Fisher Associates, he would not review that, and he would ask someone else to step in in his place. And that is why whenever we do voucher review, I specifically ask, were there any vouchers from Fisher Associates in the vouchers that they reviewed?
That is correct. Thank you for that clarification.
John, can I just ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So we talk, when we talk about conflict of interest, we talk about an actual, an actual, actual conflict of interest, but also a perceived conflict of interest. Could you speak about those two pieces?
Yes.
Because, yes, okay.
So actual conflict of interest, I, I believe you're referring to the definitions of pecuniary conflicts that are defined by our local code of ethics and the general municipal law. And then the perceived conflicts of interest are the appearance of impropriety and bias. Both of those doctrines were evaluated and provided to Trustee Bonoski. And based on the facts that were provided from him, the conclusion was made that neither of those doctrines were, were violated in conjunction with his position at Fisher Associates. There are aspects of that analysis that I would recommend not be discussed publicly at this point because, again, it is Trustee Bonoski's position. A lot of this was provided to him confidentially and privileged, and by extension, some of the other members of the board as well when this issue first came up. So before discussing it publicly, to the extent that this board wishes to make anything public, I would prefer to do this in an attorney-client session to discuss the scope of any public disclosure before doing that, especially without Trustee Bonoski's presence. I think he would deserve to be a part of that conversation.
Does that satisfy your question?
Yeah, I, I think you're saying that there isn't, there wasn't any actual conflict of interest on a legal level, but also a perception level.
Yes, well, both of them on a legal level. Even the, the, the common law conflict of interest analysis regarding the appearance of impropriety and bias and how the, how that term has been interpreted by the courts is as much of a legal conflict of interest as would be a financial one if triggered. The analysis and the conclusion based on the facts was that it was not, it did not give rise to a sufficient conflict that would necessitate a recusal.
I just want to piggyback on what Emily had brought up. In January, we took in ethics training, and I think some people were also here. And it specifically dealt with conflict of interest. And throughout that, if you said once, John, you said a hundred times, if there is the perception that the public has or believes you have a conflict of interest, and you gave lots and lots of examples, and you said, there is the legal, but there's also, also the perception of the public, if they believe you have a conflict of interest, then the best thing to do for the, for the village would be to walk away and to just accuse yourself. I mean, as I said, you said it lots and lots of times and gave lots of examples. It's like, you might be legally within all your rights, but if the perception in our residents is out there that you have this conflict, just do the right thing. I mean, that was the nugget I walked away with. And it was really brought home, and I reflected on, you know, things I do in the community since I live here and I'm representing. It puts you in a different position, and that's really guided some of the things that, you know, my actions and what I've done because you don't want to have that perception. So I guess I'm piggybacking on what Emily, who was also at that training, you know, it's like, it was the perception of, but you just said the perception is still also a legal thing.
Yes, so the doctrine itself is one of legal import. If there is a conflict of interest that gives rise to recusal, then yes. I mean, as a legal proposition, the courts and the attorney general would tell you that you should recuse yourself. I understand what you're saying. I'm happy to have a more pointed, specific discussion on this topic in this particular context. I don't believe that context came up in the discussion we had during that training. But I understand exactly what you are saying, and those are words that I have utilized to discuss the common law conflicts of interests with respect to the standards under New York law. There are many nuances to those standards, depending on the context, depending on the type of officer. Again, I want to be careful. Trustee Bonoski is not here, and I think he deserves the right to have this conversation since it does involve him. And I also, again, respecting attorney-client privilege, I would prefer not to have this debate in public. I'm happy to have a discussion privately, and then obviously, to the extent this board collectively determines that disclosures are necessary in public, we can frame something that is appropriate at a future meeting.
So I think we're at the point where, if you want to continue with this discussion, Trustee Briggs, we should take it offline outside of this meeting. And thank you for giving the feedback on the conflict of interest situation.
No problem.
Okay. With that, I think we're going to continue on our agenda for this evening. So. That would be taking us to unfinished vision, business. Can I have a motion by the village board to approve the meeting minutes of November tenth, twenty-twenty-five village board meeting?
So moved.
By trustee Woike?
Second.
By trustee Mishler? Any questions or comments about those meeting minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That'll be unanimous. Item number two is a motion by the village board to approve the meeting minutes of November eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five village board work session. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
By trustee Woike?
Second.
By trustee Briggs. Any questions or comments regarding those meeting minutes?
This was the planning session, correct?
Yes.
I have to abstain from this.
So, yeah, you, you need to abstain. Okay, so that would give us three votes, which is enough to approve it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining?
Abstain.
Okay. That will take us to new business, which is a motion by the village of Fairport to appoint Heather Williams to the Office of, Fairport Office of Community and Economic Development, the OSAD board.
So moved.
By trustee Mishler?
Second.
By trustee Briggs. Any questions or comments? Heather is currently on the planning board, and she will be, has she resigned yet? She will be resigning. And she will be moving over to OSAD to sit on their board of directors, which I'm thrilled and excited to have her take on that role.
That's great. Thank you, Heather.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That will be unanimous. Item number two is a motion to introduce Local Law Number Four of twenty-twenty-five to amend slash repeal certain chapters of the code of the village of Fairport and to set the public hearing for the proposed Local Law Number Four of twenty-twenty-five on December twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five at six PM.
So moved.
By trustee Briggs?
Second.
By trustee Woike? Any questions or comments?
Should we determine how we're moving forward with Local Law Three before we do this?
No.
Say that again, I didn't hear you.
I was just thinking, maybe we should determine how we're moving forward with Local Law Three before we move forward with Local Law Four.
What's your guidance, John?
So you have a couple options.
Okay, thanks for explaining those.
If you, if this board determines that further deliberations or edits or modifications to Local Law Number Three is necessary, i.e. there are changes that you wish to make to the code, then we will need to amend the code and then re-notice the public hearing for Local Law Number Three. That will take us into January or beyond for that portion, which means I would recommend you table Local Law Number Four if you think you're going to make more edits to Local Law Number Three. Because that way, we can reconcile the two together. You don't want to have inconsistencies in the two. If you wish to move forward with Local Law Number Three as proposed for December, is it twenty, twenty-second? And you anticipate deliberating and potentially adopting that night, I would recommend introducing Local Law Number Four for public hearing. That way, there isn't a large gap between potentially the two adoptions because you don't want to have inconsistent laws on the books when your new code has been adopted. So really, how you wish to proceed on Local Law Number Three and the timing of that should dictate when you want to introduce Local Law Number Four.
So just a thought is that we heard an hour and a half of public comment this evening with over, almost twenty people commenting. It seems that it would be reasonable, and one of our board members is not present for the, the public hearing.
He's listening to it.
There's, there was a lot of comments that I, it would be nice to deliberate with the board on. There were nuances that were added. I make a motion that we table Local Law Four? Okay.
So moved.
You actually probably don't need to do anything.
Oh.
Since it's not been, there's been no motion to have it introduced. So if you don't want to introduce it or set the public hearing, you can simply just not act on the item at all.
That's where I would be, I would feel comfortable.
You can't table unless you lift it off the floor.
Right, so it hasn't been put on the floor yet, so there's nothing to, there'd be nothing to do. You'll simply, so if, if the idea is you're going to continue to deliberate on Local Law Number Three, which is the zoning code update, then you should just not take action on this agenda item for Local Law Number Four.
So. We had a motion in a second on this. Do we have to?
Make the motion to table it and then get a second?
So I have Briggs, Briggs and Woike as the motion in the second on that.
To introduce it.
To introduce it.
I think you're gonna, I, I mean, it's on the floor now for voting, so I think you're gonna vote to not adopt, to not introduce it. Or I guess you could withdraw, I mean, Brian, under the Roberts rules, can we withdraw?
Yeah, they can either, they can do a lot of things. So they, they've lifted it from the floor for discussion and for a potential vote, should they choose to do so. And in need of that motion second to even gain traction and discussion or action by the legislative body, which you've done.
Right.
There were two motions.
So now what's going to happen is either you can either take a vote on it or you can make a motion to table it if you'd like to do that.
Right, and I made a motion to table it.
Because it's already been introduced and it's been up there now, you, there's some action that I think needs to be taken because you've done that. If you didn't take that action to introduction second for question and commentary, then as, as Village Attorney Van Cuso alluded to, you can just ignore that and move on from that and just kind of leave it sitting there. But because now it's been introduced on the floor for deliberation,
Take a vote.
It requires some action.
And then post-vote, someone could introduce it to table it? Take a vote and then it table it, or?
So if you, you can either, if you,
If you vote, you don't take.
If you vote on it, there's nothing to table because you voted on, took action on it, right?
Okay.
So either as a body, you need to determine whether you'd like to vote on that, on this motion, or if it's something where you want it to sit out there for a while so you can have further deliberation and, and, and communication amongst the board. You can, somebody can make a motion to table.
Which she just did.
And if she gets a second, then it's required to go through a vote.
And Tracy just seconded it.
Then there you go, then you must vote on it.
I, I, yeah, I agree, Brian. I prefer that.
Okay. All right, so we are voting on
Tabling.
The motion to table the local law. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Aye.
Aye.
So since the quorum is not full with three to two, it gets tabled because.
And can I just say that it's out of respect for, I think that the hour and a half of deliberation we had this evening, I just think it's to honor all of those who came and spoke at our public hearing that we, as a board,
We'll think about it.
Let all of those comments sit and settle, and we marinate on those a little bit before.
So, let's understand, let's understand that.
Because it was introduced in second, it's on the floor for voter legislative action. The body requested a motion in a second to table, which was just voted on. It was a two-two vote for it, so that motion fails. The, the actual motion itself is sit on, still on the table for action. I think the board has to now take action on the motion.
All right, so I'm willing, I'm willing to switch my vote into table it.
Two-two means it's, it's, it didn't happen. There's no approval to table.
Right, if you reintroduce the tabling and pass it, then it will be tabled.
That's fine.
But right now, because it's been introduced, unless you do something else and make another motion to table, you have to take a vote on this action.
Trustee Mishler, make another motion to table it.
I make a motion to table Local Law Number Four.
Can I have a second?
So moved.
By trustee Briggs? All in favor of tabling it? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed to tabling it?
Aye.
Three-one, so that does count.
Okay, so it's now tabled.
Yeah, Local, Local Law Number Four is tabled. No public hearing will be scheduled for December twenty-second. So the, presumably, the board will continue its deliberations and discussions on the zoning code.
On Local Law Three.
Correct.
Which we heard a public hearing on this evening for an hour and a half.
Correct.
Sure.
And that is my, that's my point, that I, I believe that out of respect for our residents, that we need to let that settle.
Okay.
Thank you.
So there is no public hearing scheduled for Local Law Number Four on December twenty-second. That will move us to item number three, which is a motion by the village board to accept the November twenty-twenty-five financial statements for the village of Fairport and the October twenty-twenty-five financial statements for the Fairport Municipal Commission. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Jinx. Trustee Woike?
It's definitely a tie.
Mishler is the second. And any questions or comments about that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That will be unanimous. Item number four, okay, so you all received a note from Trustee Bonoski this afternoon that he approved the vouchers. And so normally, he would be the second on the motion to approve vouchers. But since he's not here, trustee Woike will make, I will make the, she will make the motion because she's here and she's approved them. And then you can duke it out at this end here over who wants to second it. But they have been reviewed by two individuals. So. Can I have a motion for the village board to authorize payment of the audited bills?
I reviewed the monthly bills and found everything to be in order.
Can I have a second, please? Trustee Mishler, or so Woike, Mishler? And it's discussion, do you have a composting number?
I do. I always have the composting number. We were two-point-two tons. We were down a little bit from the month prior, but.
That's because everybody had those pumpkins the month prior.
This is, that's my, that is my guess as well, is that it was all pumpkin-related and everyone has eaten all of their Thanksgiving leftovers at this point.
So for anybody who's here who is not aware of this, the village offers free composting to village residents. You can take your buckets to either the DPW at Railroad Street or the Toters at Potter Park. And it is free and available for food scraps. And there's more information on our website underneath the DPW site for composting. But it is something that we offer. And in the monthly bills, it shows up every month how much has been composted. So that's a great number to know. All right, with all, with all that said, all in favor of approving the vouchers?
Aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? That will be unanimous as well. Uh, item number five is a motion by the village board to amend the previously approved amount of sixty thousand dollars to pay health and dental insurance premiums paid in the month of December to fifty-four thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and twenty-seven cents. Can I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Mishler?
Second.
Briggs? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That will be unanimous. Item number six is a motion by the village board to authorize the clerk treasurer to pay health and dental insurance premiums for the month of January in an initial estimated amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars, subject to audit and amending authorization by the village board at their regularly scheduled January meeting. By trustee Mishler?
Second.
By trustee Waika? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That'll be unanimous. Item number seven is a motion by the village board to enter into an executive session. Uh, do you want me to move that down, Brian? There's an executive session on there.
No, yeah, uh, so you want to leave that where it is. Uh, we're going to go into executive session, just in case you have any questions on the real estate transaction for eight-nine.
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure we had it in the right order. Um, item number seven is a motion by the village board to enter executive session to discuss the proposed acquisition, sale, or lease of real property.
So moved.
By trustee Mishler?
Second.
By trustee Briggs? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So for anyone who's still here, we will go enter executive session in the conference room. When we come back, normally, I say here that the meeting is over. It is not over, we will take a short break and then come back and finish the, um, remaining items on the agenda. So if you would like to stay, please, we'll be back. If you want to go home, uh, we'll be back online in just a few minutes. Thank you.
We're back live? Great.
Welcome back to the Village Board meeting for December 8th. We're on Item Number Eight. Can I have a resolution or get a motion in a second for the resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Fairport adopting a negative declaration regarding the sale of village property?
So moved.
All right, so we'll give that to Trustee Briggs, seconded by Trustee Woike. Any questions or comments? Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That will be a unanimous item. And then Item Number Nine is a motion to declare, bah, a motion to declare surplus tax parcel number, surplus, it went in there twice, surplus tax parcel number 152.120-002-001.200, otherwise known as the Village Landfill, and discard by means of public auction, sealed bids, or private sale. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
By Trustee Briggs?
Second.
By Trustee Woike? Any questions or concerns, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That will be unanimous. And then that takes us to Item Number Ten, which is a motion by the Village Board to authorize a sale, excuse me, a purchase and sale agreement between the Village of Fairport and J.C. Development of New York LLC for tax parcel number 152.120-002-001.200, otherwise known as the Village Landfill, and for the Mayor and Corporation Council to execute any and all documents associated with the sale of this property.
So moved.
By Trustee Woike?
Second.
By?
Briggs.
Trustee Briggs, okay. Hearing's not so good tonight. Any questions or discussions about that? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That will be unanimous as well, which takes us to announcements and committee reports. I'll start right here. Trustee Woike?
We already talked about the compost. Otherwise, I know there's a ton of holiday events going on in the village from, I know Santa came through this weekend, there's the tree lighting, there's a bunch more things going on. You can find it at, from the Fairport Parent and Merchants Association and the Find It in Fairport page on Facebook. Big thanks to DPW for getting those lights up on Main Street, on the new poles, they look really awesome. And thanks for, thanks to DPW for getting out and plowing us when we already got snow in December.
Make sure you throw in there with those lights, FMC.
Oh, and FMC, yes.
Thank you.
Obviously, I could not forget FMC.
Okay. I'll move on to Trustee Mishler.
Yes, so the Come Home for the Holiday event on Saturday and Sunday was just fantastic. There were so many volunteers, lots of donations as well, or sponsors, I should say. I know OSED was a huge sponsor in, in a lot of that. So, and it was wonderful, just, just magical. And then we still have the Holiday Movie Nights coming up at the Fairport Public Library on the 17th, that's at 6:00 PM. I think the movie that's showing is While You Were Sleeping. And then if this doesn't warm your heart, I don't know what will, there's Holiday Harps Concert at 2:00 PM in the library, which sounds lovely. I wish I was free and not working that day to go to that, but if I were home, I would be going there. So I hope you all get there. That's all I have. And I just, I guess, want to really thank our residents for taking the time out tonight to, to come and to, to share your perspectives on this. It's really nice to hear a public comment and participate in democracy and to listen and to, you know, to hear opposing sides and to disagree without being disagreeable. It was really good. So, thank you. I know that those comments will inform our work moving forward.
Okay, Trustee Briggs?
Just that I spent Saturday and Sunday down at Home for the Holidays and gave out pretzels and the wagon rides. And I do want to throw in that the I'd Family Dealership really does a huge sponsor, and we so appreciate them because they sponsor, they like us, they sponsor a lot of stuff in Fairport and Perrington. So we're very appreciative to the I'd Family Dealerships. On Saturday, I was collecting food donations and money donations for the wagon rides. And just, it was such a family event. I was, there was lots of families with lots of really young kids. And this one time, it was either a dollar or a canned good for the Perrington Food Cupboard. And this one family was like, "Mom, we live right around the corner, we're going to get the cans." So I thought that was really nice, that it was definitely immediate, they went and got cans. And then I'd sponsored for the dollar or the can, after you got your ride, you got to go to Moonlight Creamery and have free hot cocoa because you got a little ticket to do that. So that was really fun. And Sunday, different timeframe for those families that could come out on, on Sunday. Unfortunately, I think the NFL shifted some local games and maybe stole a little of our thunder on, on Sunday. But I got to meet Lucy and Jade, and they're, they're actually the horses that run the wagons, and feed them some peppermint. And I'd forgotten, like from my childhood Girl Scout days, how much horses love peppermints. So it was just an all-around, you know, very family-friendly, feel-good, awesome event in the village. And thank you to the merchants and the partnership and the village, OSED, I'd Family. It's late, it's all good.
All set?
I'm just checking in.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. The only last thing that I have to share is, in addition to attending and hearing about, at the FMC meeting this morning, hearing about the incident on Friday, they are also undertaking a very large-scale, it's kind of like a restoration, you know, the infusion that they're doing into the electric lines, Brian?
Cable injection?
Yeah, cable injection. Can you just, because I'm not the best at explaining it in like three sentences or less, let the board know that we are undertaking a large-scale project through FMC, which is to prolong the life of cables in our village.
Yes, we have a lot of direct berry underground electric cable in our franchise, meaning it's not in conduit, it's just in the ground, it's older, a lot of it put in the 70s and 80s. And so that, that cable has a shelf life. And there's insulation and different grounding wires that surround it. It's not just a piece of wire, it's a multitude of things. So what we do is miles and miles of cable injection every year. What that does is it, sort of having to dig that up in these neighborhoods that were built 40, 50 years ago, mature trees and driveways and sidewalks and all, that would be a very invasive thing to just rip all that out and put new in. There's a process of cable injection where there is a silicone fluid that is injected to that cable that seeps through that and re-insulates everything and makes it, basically gives it another 20 or 30 years of lifespan. So we do that to the tune of $400,000, $500,000 a year. It's very similar to the process that the board is familiar with when we talk about storm or sanitary laterals. Instead of, you know, it, and it would cost us 10 times the amount to excavate, pull out, repair, put new, you know, utilities in the ground and piping. What we do now is we take the existing sanitary sewer or sewer mains that are in the ground, we put a liner internally in them, it hardens up, and it gives it a basically a brand-new surface and a lifespan and a longevity to it. So this is very similar just on the electric side, so there you go.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I have one last item that I need to take care of tonight because this is your last official Village Board meeting, Emily Mishler, Trustee Mishler.
We still have the December 22nd.
That is a work session meeting. This is your last official board, board meeting. So...
On behalf of the village...
Oh, oh my, where did you, where are you hiding that? Aww, it's so beautiful.
On behalf of the village, I would like to award you that. And thank you for your service to this community for the past five years?
Six years.
Six years, six years.
Thank you. Beautiful, I love it. That was very kind of you.
Compliments of the village. Obviously, it's a Nikki Bittner print, but thank you for your service to this community. I'm sorry that Adam couldn't be here when we, we got that for you.
I wasn't actually planning that tonight was my last meeting. I mean, I know that I'll be here on the 22nd.
It's your last official Village Board meeting, so...
Well, thank you for making this evening special, too.
Okay. Well, thank you, and we appreciate all that you've contributed to the village over this time, and best wishes in your new role with the Town of Perrington.
Thank you. That was very kind of you.
Merry Christmas. Okay, and on that note, I will take us to upcoming Village Board meetings. There's a Village Board work session currently scheduled for December 22nd, 2025 at 6:00 PM. The Village Board, next Village Board regular meeting is scheduled for January 12th. However, there may be an organizational meeting the previous week. I don't think we have a date scheduled for it yet. Village Manager White and I discussed it today. And as soon as we have that organizational meeting date scheduled, we will make sure that it's available out online and through all the usual sources.
With, with the board having their count, would you guys be available the fifth or sixth if we did it the week before for the org meeting? Or would you even be opposed to doing it all on the 12th if that was an option? We're trying to look at everything to see just what, what makes sense, what doesn't. We could, we can really do whatever you guys want, but we're trying to look at some alternate dates, maybe the week before to do that, either the fifth or the sixth, based on scheduling.
The fifth, sixth is fine, for me, either one.
Fifth, Monday or Tuesday.
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to send an email note out to board members.
We can do that.
Just to get a, get feedback because Trustee Benoski's not here tonight to answer live in person. But we were discussing trying to get the org session done as early as we possibly can and then move forward with our first regular meeting. And the organizational meeting, if you're asking Village Manager White, it will take 10 minutes. If you ask me, it'll take 30 minutes. So it's a quick meeting because you're just doing appointments and approving policies. However, maybe I don't read fast enough. We'll work on my reading skills.
And if anyone wants to attend the town organizational meeting and swearing and ceremony, that's Monday, the 5th at 7:00, yeah.
Okay.
If you wanted to try to coordinate.
Well, you know what? If we can get started at 6:00 and I can make it quick, everybody can go see you, Emily.
Well, it's not just me, it's...
I know.
There's a whole board meeting for it.
Yeah. So with that, I'll send that email out tomorrow and we'll have further discussions about how we move forward with the comments that we heard. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Trustee Mishler beat you.
She did.
Mishler is the motion, Woike is the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you to everyone who stuck it out to the very end. And thank you for everybody who joined us earlier.